Great. So let's formally start the meeting. And Shelley, you want to do a roll call?
Yes, please. Brackwich, Brown.
Here.
Cottner, Dunn, McCumbey, Weinstein, Danley.
Wait, we, no Weinstein's on.
Weinstein?
Maybe he was on you.
Here.
Oh.
Here.
Dunham.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Guadagnino.
Here.
Heith.
Here.
Jones.
Yep.
Cubitt.
Here.
Lynn Dale.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
Holleran.
Here.
And is Rick Kaluza on with you as well?
Yes, I have Rick and Matt Stolberg.
And then also joining in the room from Deloitte are Ed Kresman and Jessica Chen.
Great, thank you. All right, well, let's start the, let's start the meeting this morning. And I'd like to start it with the approval of the February 22nd meeting minutes. First of all, let me open it up to see if there's anybody that has any comments regarding those minutes. All right, hearing none, then do I hear a motion and a second to approve those minutes?
I make a motion.
So moved.
All, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you. All right, Dan, a quick update on roles and responsibilities?
Yes, thanks. Well, before I start that, I was neglectful. Sorry, everyone. I forgot to introduce also Walt, I have Gary Gerger, my associate director for the department, is with us as well in the room, but my oversight.
Welcome here.
The matrix, I think the important here is we come up at the end of the fiscal year, the last item that said May because we were originally supposed to have a meeting in May, but we moved it to today. We will, Walt, at the end of today, have covered all the items that are outlined in the charter and the responsibilities of the committee. So I think that's the important part. If anybody has any questions, be glad to entertain us.
You know, the only, my only question, you know, is that we always do this universities' enterprise risk management efforts. I assume, is that just, you know, when we cover risk topics, are we covering that or is there a broader risk management, you know, view that we need to be getting in these meetings?
So it's in two pieces, Walt. First, to hear about risks that the committee is charged with, but to also have response. This is the committee which has responsibility for the oversight of the process of the, of the university's overall risk management process and to make sure that the risks which have been assigned to various board committees are heard by those committees. Much of that is delegated to the, in practice, delegated to the risk subcommittee, but it is the Audit and Risk Committee which has the accountability for it.
Okay, but outside of the risk subcommittee and their efforts, the audit committee doesn't have anything over beyond that as it relates to enterprise risk management? That we need to review, that is?
Correct. We will provide an update in a few minutes further down the agenda on the activities of the subcommittee. And Walt, you know, between Gary and me, if there are anything that weren't defined, it would be.
Yeah, yeah, I do. Okay, perfect. All right, so Dan, we're covering everything we need to cover outside of that. And obviously, we have the NCAA added to that, agreed upon procedures and the like. So that's terrific. And so I don't have any questions. Any other questions with respect to roles and responsibilities in the matrix? Okay, great. Hearing none, then let's move on to the next piece of it, which is, Dan, just the review of overall audit and the risk in the operating guidelines.
Right, and annually, the committee is charged with updating, reviewing and updating. The only item there was, that changed in here is on page five, and it's redlined on the electronic version, where we added the responsibilities with respect to the NCAA monitoring, intercollegiate athletics monitoring related to NCAA reporting and a few other items. So that's now been updated on the guidelines, so be glad to, again, entertain questions on that if anybody has any.
Well, I remember I noticed anything in red jumps at me, and I guess the president's budget is just a slight tuning of the words, that's why it's added and deleted.
Right, and what, I wanted to get it in the right order.
Oh, okay, so there's nothing?
No, nothing changed there. It was just a matter of ordering.
Okay, great.
To put the catch-all, perform any other activities, make that lie.
In the scheme of things, the NCAA and all that is a lot more relevant for discussion than, it just jumped at me.
Yeah. And I did have a question on that, Dan. The cadence of receiving an update on ICA and the NCAA agreed upon procedures, obviously we're going to do that today, is that cadence going to be annually? Or do you think it needs to happen, you know, more often than that?
I, I think the type of items that have to be updated, Walt, would be an annual update because the agreed upon procedures report we're going to review is issued once a year and it comes out in the, the May meeting's the right meeting for that. It usually comes out around February, January. So I think it's easier to just do it now. And then likewise, the update on the other monitoring procedures of the boosters club and what goes on, I think this is the right time of year to get that.
Yeah, but he asked, he didn't ask if this is the right time of year, he asked is once a year often enough?
And it is for this purpose. If there's anything that would come out, that would be, okay, let's say there was an issue or we identified a problem, similar to anything else in the university, I would update the committee during the year as needed.
Oh, okay, that's, that's the right answer. In other words, we formally do this, but if you see anything, any time of the year, you're not waiting to May.
That's right.
Of course, I already knew the answer to that. That was a dumb question on my part, forgive me.
Yeah, no, but that's a good point, Ted. I mean, and so, Dan, you're, because you're constantly doing internal auditing of the athletics department, and so you'd update us accordingly as you see fit.
That's correct, just like any other department throughout the university.
Yep, I'm good, I'm good with that. So annually is fine. That's my only question is, do we need to add that in? And if you don't think we need to, you were covering it, that's fine. So do, do I hear, do we need to get a formal approval on this?
I, I think it would be good, yes.
Well, before we leave that, something just occurred to me. Since we're losing you, is it documented anywhere what you just said? Suppose your successor doesn't feel the way we know you do. Is it documented somewhere that your position, not you, we know you've done a great job, your position has the responsibility to come to us?
And that's outlined in the charter of the internal audit department, my department charter. This is, these are the charters of this committee.
Okay, so your replacement will know?
Yes, they have to follow through with that on their charter.
Come to us.
If there's anything like that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great. All right, so do I hear a motion and a second to approve this, these guidelines?
I make a motion.
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Okay, good. So next on the docket, I think, is Joe, are you going to give us an update on the OMB Uniform Guidance Report?
Yes, yep, of the Jessica and I, yeah, I think we're ready here for that report, Walt. Thanks, this is the annual report on the Uniform Guidance Audit, which essentially is the, is the external audit over all of our federal awards and expenditures and programs. We did spare you the 108-page full report in your material. You have about 10 to a dozen pages in your material that encompass the opinions, reports and conclusions of Deloitte out of that work. I do want to say that the full 108 pages is on the university's website under the Controller's Office, under Public Reports. It's filed with our Right to Know filing and other, our financial statements and other filings that are available publicly. So if anybody really does want to dig into the 108 pages, it is out there. The composition is 40 pages of the financial statements, which you're all well familiar with from our November review. There's about 60 pages of the schedule of federal awards, which total nearly $1.3 billion. That's both the student, the student assistance programs and the research cluster, which I'll go through that detail in a second. And then the last six pages of the report are the opinions that are encompassed in the material you have in front of you. I'm happy to say with all the opinions, the opinion on financial reporting, the opinion on internal control and the opinion on major federal programs, we're all clean this year. And if you go to the back of the material in this section, there's a grid-like document that says there were no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and that we are still considered a low-risk auditee going forward based on this year's audit. There's also a schedule on status on prior year findings. There were no findings last year either, so that schedule is effectively blank. So in all respects, this is a clean opinion, but to give you the context, this covers about $1.3 billion of federal expenditures. Of that $1.3 billion, about $681 million is considered the student financial aid cluster, $544 million is considered the research and development cluster, and $70 million are other programs, one of the larger ones being a state, the state administrative matching grant for the supplemental nutrition assistance program, which we effectively administer on behalf of the state even though it is federal funds. So that's a thumbnail sketch of the billion three. Again, if anybody would like the gory, gory.
Can you give me those numbers again?
Yes.
The billion three is?
Yes, 681 is the student financial aid cluster.
Round over $700 million student aid.
Yep, 544 on research and development and 70 million on other miscellaneous programs.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, that's the billion three in total. Just, if you, if you want to peel the onion back one layer on the student financial aid cluster, 548 million is the federal direct loan program, 43 million, or 83 million is the federal Pell Grant program and 43 million is the federal Perkins program. So those are the larger programs within the student aid cluster. But again, it was a clean report, no findings. We continue to be a low-risk auditee. Happy to take any questions. And again, gory details available online.
Just, I just have one question, and that is with respect to the state of Pennsylvania. And you have to remind me of this, Joe. Do they rely on this opinion or do we, do they require a separate audit to be done? For their, and their R and D and the like?
Yeah, basically, every, I would say, every, every federal agency we do business with as well as the Commonwealth who passes through federal money to us relies on this, this report as kind of a, you know, an overarching review of our ability to maintain, to maintain, expend and pay in compliance with all the regulations around federal funds. So the Commonwealth is one recipient and user, but there are dozens of federal agencies and other, other users of these that rely on the outcome. And in years where we have had findings, we get numerous follow-ups from those agencies to say, what are you, what are you doing about this? What are you doing about that? Technically, all the federal agencies are supposed to rely completely on this, but nonetheless, a lot of them still like to stick their nose under the tent and do their own specific procedures, which we handle on a one-off basis whenever we're asked.
Okay. So do we need to formally approve these financial statements or this opinion or not?
Typically, we have not. The financial statements section of this, that first 40 pages that are referred to is effectively almost identical to, the opinion is slightly different, but the, the report itself is virtually the same. I don't know if Jessica's here in the room from Deloitte, she may want to comment? No.
No, you're right, correct.
Yeah, so there's not a need, you've already accepted the financial statements. This is really sharing the results of the audit regarding the, the outcome of the procedures and the fact that it was clean.
Great. Okay, I'll just open it up if any questions, if anybody else has with respect to this, the OMB Uniform Guidance Report. All right, hearing none, then let's move on to intercollegiate athletics.
Yes, as we already mentioned, Walt, in the, you know, as the, the new charter, the updated charter reflected, the committee has been charged with certain monitoring aspects related to intercollegiate athletics. So today, we're going to cover that and Joe's going to start talking about the agreed upon procedures report. And then Lynn and, and her team will talk about what athletics is doing, and then I'll wrap it up with some things as to what we do on an ongoing basis in internal audit. So Joe?
Actually, we're going to change your word up just a little bit because all of our, all of our colleagues on the line for intercollegiate athletics, their, their reports kind of build on one another. So I think I'm going to let Lynn Holleran, Rick Kaluza and Matt Stolberg introduce themselves, and they're each going to spend a couple minutes talking about the broader facets of this topic. What you have in your material is the agreed upon procedures report, but that's really not meant to dominate this conversation. That's really more of an artifact of one of the processes we do around monitoring intercollegiate athletics. I think Lynn and Rick and Matt's comments will be a little bit broader than that, then they'll circle back to me to just quickly cap this off and then turn it over, back over to Dan. So Lynn, I'm going to hand it off to you and Rick.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you, Joe, appreciate it. Good morning, everybody. As Joe just said, a group of us here today. So I am Lynn Holleran, Senior Associate AD for Administration. Joining me today is also Matt Stolberg, who is the Associate Athletic Director for Compliance, Athletic Compliance, Rick Kaluza, who is the Senior Associate AD and CFO for Athletics, and just joining us now, Sandy Barber, the Athletic Director. So we're going to touch on, I'll give you a real big picture as it relates to our booster groups here in athletics and allow Matt the opportunity to talk more about some of the policies and procedures as it relates to NCAA rules. And then Rick will take it and focus on the financial aspects of the booster groups and lead us into some other topics related to that. So big picture wise, purpose of our booster groups, we have 15 official booster groups associated with our athletic programs, really is to support our athletic programs from a perspective of fan base, in some instances, from a financial perspective. We do have a process, an approval process, that all booster groups must go through in order to be approved as an official booster group that requires us to review their charter, their list of officials, their basic structure, an orientation relating to NCAA rules, and then of course, there is an agreement set up by which there are a number of processes, again, that Matt and Rick are going to touch on here, that they are expected to follow. Most of the activity of the booster groups relate, again, from a support perspective, whether they're doing pre-game or post-game festivities for booster group members and teams. Oftentimes, booster groups are very engaged in our banquets and supporting our student athletes. They oftentimes will do golf outings and participate in fundraising for foreign tours and those types of things. But again, booster groups have a lot of oversight as it relates to NCAA rules and financial pieces. So I'm going to stop there and turn it over to Matt Stolberg, who's going to touch on the NCAA perspective for you.
From a compliance standpoint, our interest is in establishing checks and balances with regard to booster club activities. So that takes a couple forms, mainly monitoring of some of their financial transactions and education. On the monitoring piece, we have, we have kind of a two-tiered model where based on revenues, we will do transactional monitoring for every dollar spent for some of our clubs that have a higher level of annual revenue. For the lower revenue clubs, there's a co-signature arrangement for their financials and they're, they will be subject to an annual review of how they're spending their money and their, what their activities are. So that's, that's the financial monitoring piece. We also create checks and balances through education, and that takes a couple forms. We have periodic, kind of every couple of years, booster club meetings with the leadership of each organization. We distribute educational materials, we print about 25,000 informational brochures that are to season ticket holders and booster club members. We have individual meetings every year sporadically with, with clubs as issues come up, and we are, we're always providing interpretive assistance to the clubs and having regular interpretive conversations of things that we identify or things that they bring to us. So it's a pretty, pretty significant effort on our part, takes a lot of our time, and we're happy to provide that service.
All right, thanks, Matt. Continuing on briefly with the booster club theme, in the fall of 2017, internal audit recommended that we, as athletics, begin an annual review of our booster clubs, just some added testing that is done along with what Matt had already described in the, in the compliance area. So we selected three clubs for the first year of this testing, wrestling, women's volleyball and men's basketball. And internal audit worked with us to design a work plan, which we're performing internally within our, our finance department here within ICA. And we're reviewing things such as the constitution, the bylaws, confirming offices are in place, briefly reviewing bank accounts, verifying they're submitting their financial reports correctly, appropriate insurance coverage, and then just doing some high-level transactional testing just to make sure that the, the business purpose is proper. Moving into this year, we'll add three new clubs to that, to that testing. We'll do football, women's basketball and men's ice hockey. Now let me touch on the agreed upon procedures, as Joe alluded to earlier, performed on an annual basis by Deloitte and Touche. As can be seen in the audit report that was contained within your materials, the annual agreed upon procedures is required by the NCAA through a certain bylaw, 3.2, 0.4, 0.15. The auditors are testing and evaluating whether our revenues and expenses are in compliance with this bylaw as of our fiscal year end. The review occurs essentially in two stages. Stage one is in the fall, following our fiscal year end, June 30th. They'll come in and review our internal, our internal control procedures, reviewing the existing procedures with me in order to verify consistency in past years with the process and make sure that the employees are still consistent in who is performing them as they were in prior years. And we'll also do some transactional testing to verify that we're following the procedures as documented. And then stage two comes along in December and January following, and this concerns the audit activities around the NCA report that you may be familiar with by accessing our GoPSU Sports.com website, where we're publishing this annual report in, usually in about February of every year. This is the report that we submit to the NCA that we also make public on our website. If you're familiar with that or if you're not, there's, there's 19 revenue categories that we, that we report on, there's 22 expense categories. And the accumulation of all this sums to our grand total revenues and expenses that we then present in this report. For each category, in excess of 4% of total revenues and expenses, Deloitte performs a variety of transactional testing based on sample sizes that are, that are predetermined by the, by the university and in conjunction with Deloitte. We also do, I also do some variance analyses based on any category that's, that's showing a 10% variance or greater in a certain year, year on year, and those are analyzed for reasonable, the explanations are analyzed for reasonableness there as well. And then ultimately, these, the values that we present are validated and we submit the report to the NCA in mid-January. And then this is followed by us placing that report, as I mentioned, in, in early February on our GoPSU Sports.com website for public access.
Rick, hey, Rick, this is Walt Rakkwitch.
Yes.
That, that's the report that you have given us in conjunction with this book, right?
The report that was contained in your materials is actually the audit report.
Yeah.
The on, the online version, the, the, more or less, the, the statement of revenues and expenses, that's what's placed on our website. That was not included in your materials, I don't believe.
Is that, is that consistent with this that you've given us or would it?
Absolutely.
Would it differ from it? It is?
It absolutely is consistent. It, the, the audit report basically outlined the, the procedural details of what, what went into the testing behind the numbers that we present online.
Okay, one, okay, sounds good. And are the revenues and expenditure categories different or are they the same as well?
Exactly the same.
Okay.
So it's, there's a good, there's a, there's a very much a tie-in between, you know, between the, the report that's submitted to the NCA and the, and the audit report. The audit report is just more descriptive in, in nature of the testing, whereas the, the online report is more just numbers.
And is there, I, I would assume the answer is no, but does athletics have a balance sheet?
We do not.
Okay, so basically, you have an income statement each year, and the NCAA does not require that you show them comparative numbers year over year, just whatever the annual number is?
That's correct.
Okay.
But they do, Walt, this is Joe, but they do have a repository of prior years and, I mean, their, their database has all the prior years' reports.
Right, right, okay.
This is Ted Brown, I have two, two questions. One is a semantic question. You referenced booster clubs. What do we call the football booster club as opposed to what is the Nittany Lion Club? When you say booster club to me, I, I don't know what that means.
So our, our booster groups are affiliated directly with particular programs, like the quarterback club would be affiliated directly with our football program. And again, our booster groups support the programs in a variety of different ways, depending on their charters. They might support them with holding and supporting financially the annual banquet, golf outings, they do pre-game and post-game activities for their members, those types of things.
So the quarterback club is what you refer to as the football booster club?
Yes.
That, that seems to be, I mean, that's a relatively small club compared to the amount of money that's given by donors for football. So that wouldn't represent any of the money. Is the STEP program considered donor money?
Yes, to the Nittany Lion Club, which is our overall development group, which is not a booster group.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question. And, and by the way, I'm still confused. So officially, the football booster club is the quarterback club, and therefore it does not cover the vast majority of monies that relate to football boosters, which are under NCA rules. But the Nittany Lion Club is also under NCA rules, I assume?
Correct.
I'm just trying to understand, where do we audit the millions that are paid for boost, I'm sorry, for STEP program and the millions that are paid in donations for football? Neither of those go to the quarterback club?
Those are effectively made to the university at large, and so they're covered as part of university revenues.
But that means they're not subject to NCA inspection?
Oh, no, they're, they're still subject to NCA inspection. I mean, basically, all, everybody that, and I don't want to step on my ICA colleague's material here, but everybody that donates to the Nittany Lion Club is a booster by definition.
Right, I agree with that, yep.
No, the, so guys, the booster is kind of a colloquialism that we use. From an NCA standpoint, they would be considered representatives of the institution's athletic interests. Booster is not an NCA term.
Okay.
When you make reference, when you make reference to the, if we're auditing the Nittany Lion Club donations, we most certainly are. There, when I mentioned that there are 19 revenue categories, one of the revenue categories within that agreed upon procedures report is contributions. And all of the contributions that flow through the Nittany Lion Club are subject to that, that testing that Deloitte would perform as part of the overall agreed upon procedures.
Okay, so my question about how is any money donated to football, regardless of what we call it, is subject to NCA rules and is subject to Deloitte audits?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's right. Now I have a, really out of left field question. Walt, may I say this is not the time or place, but this is the Audit and Risk Committee. I have concerns about mixed signals on the Beaver Stadium elevator program. The president at our last meeting said, oh, well, all we're doing is evaluating the cost. Help me, somebody was there, if I misquote, please correct me. Yet I understand there's already contracts for that combined $10 million program. By the way, does everybody know what I'm talking about?
I, I think David Gray's on the phone, he'd probably be the best one to respond to this.
Yeah, I think, I think there, there aren't contracts for a project yet, Ted. They're, they're in, they're in preliminary design and looking at, at the feasibility, but no decision has been made and no contracts have been awarded to actually move forward with anything at this, at this point in time.
Well, will that, because it's split into two projects that are less than X dollars, will that project need board approval?
No, even if the, even if the two projects were combined into one, it's anticipated that they would fall underneath the $10 million that would require board approval.
I'll bet you, Ted, expensive dinner, David, that by the time it's done, it will be over $10, even if the budget's under.
Well, again, you're, you're, you're surmising that, that there's, that we're going to move forward, and I think that's, that's premature, Ted. I don't think, there have been no decisions reached to move forward with either, let alone both of those, those projects.
All right, now let, let me move the question to the other half of the committee. I think the optics of this project... I think the optics of this project are terrible if we go ahead. To spend, I'll use the numbers that I'm aware of.
Ted, let me stop you there. I think your questions and your statement are inappropriate for the audit committee right now. We're not focused on elevators in football stadiums, we're focused on this report, and people's time is important. So if you want to take that argument offline with people, I'm fine with that, but not in the audit committee. It's not, it's not appropriate right now.
It is appropriate at some time.
Well, it may be, but we're focused on the statement of revenues and expenditures right now, and we're focused, and we're focused on, you know, all these other procedures. I don't want to, I don't want to get caught up in a small item right now, which might turn out to be big, but it has nothing to do with the audit committee. So I have some questions with respect to the statement of revenues and expenditures. One is, when it, when you have contributions down there, $30 million, is that all just donations, or are there other things that are mixed in with that?
Those are pretty, those would consist of our donations to the Nittany Lion Club, being the primary portion of those. And then that would also involve all of our contributions to our various facility projects, such as what is currently progressing, for example, at Lash.
Okay.
Panzer, Morgan Center, some of the other.
For a single fiscal year.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. And if somebody is, in the other booster clubs, the 15, or I count 18, or whatever it is that's in here, those expenditures, which add up to, call it a million dollars, do they ultimately flow into this statement of revenues and expenditures, or are they sort of outside the boundaries of this?
They would be outside the boundaries of this. They do, every one of those booster clubs has their own financial statement, if you will. What, when we, we do have miscellaneous donations that flow into miscellaneous funds for each support program, or for each varsity program, I'm sorry, the OUD accounts, we refer to them as, the Office of University Development. And those are just miscellaneous gifts that programs can use for things that are more out of the ordinary, that don't, that maybe aren't funded for in their operating budget, foreign trips and the like, special equipment purchases. But the activity of the booster clubs themselves does not flow through the athletic revenues and expenses.
Okay, that's what I thought. So they're outside the bounds of this. Back to Ted's question, there's a, there is separation between contributions directly to the organization, excuse me, to Penn State as opposed to booster club expenditures. Media rights, is that primarily Big Ten Network?
It is, it is, but keep in mind, you're looking at fiscal year '16, '17, and it's so that the new media rights package has not been reflected in those numbers. But yes, that's our, that's mainly representative of our, of the Big Ten Conference's television deal with the various networks that they're, you know, Big Ten Network, ESPN, ABC, CBS, et cetera.
Okay, so that's all, that's everything wrapped into one?
Correct.
Okay. And then finally, my last question is, the conference distributions, is that, obviously it comes from the Big Ten, is that consistent for all Big Ten schools? In other words, everybody gets the same amount? And if so, where does that come from?
So for the most part, yes, that is part of the overall kind of pooling concept that the conference utilizes. They, you know, there are several items that we keep for ourselves, such as ticket sales, but there are others, such as, there's revenue sharing in football and basketball, the television shares are all distributed equally. But what you're referring to on the conference distributions, these would be the, some of the funding that we receive from the NCA and the Big Ten regarding sports sponsorship, grant aid, there's a basketball fund distribution. All those monies are pooled together at the conference level and then allocated one, I'll say, it's not necessarily 1/14th because Maryland and Rutgers are not fully integrated into the equal sharing plan yet until they, I think, until they've been in the conference for six years. But for right now, 1/12th of those monies get distributed equally out to each conference member.
Okay, great. That makes sense. And I assume the non-program-specific stuff is just, you know, not allocated to any one sport, but just athletics, period?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, let me, are there any other questions on the committee with respect to the statement or the boosters or the footnotes or anything like that?
Nope.
Ryan, Elliot, you guys okay?
I'm okay. I'm good, Walt, thank you.
Okay, Lynn, I'm going to turn this back to you and thank Rick and Matt for their update. Are there more things, Lynn, that you need to go through?
No, Walt, we are all set. I would hand it over probably to Dan at this point.
Joe, I think.
Yeah, and in the interest of time, Walt, I just wanted to point out on the page, page number five in the report, typically this has been a clean report forever, for as long as any of us can remember. There was one, I'll describe it as the most minor of findings this year, it's page five, and basically what that, it's under number three on page five. The issue was that the NCA report understated Pell grant recipients by one person, we reported 116 instead of 117. The records didn't match because a student's record changed after the data for the NCA report was submitted. The change in the student's record came about because there was a faster verification process after the fact. The reason I describe this as really minor, we can't even go back and, there's no mechanism, as we understand it, to even go back and change, reflect this, but it was a change in the student record after the deadline and after the filing of the report was occurred, had occurred. And because PSU data underrepresented the Pell dollars, the number of Pell recipients, there's no chance that PSU received more money than we were entitled to. So there's, it's a legitimate compliance exception, but I would describe it as minor, with really no risk.
This one I'm looking at here is the $4,201.
Correct, yeah.
Out of the 700 million?
Correct, correct.
I would say that your summary is valid.
Yeah, I just wanted to point it out, since there was one.
Well, I'm actually glad when we have little tiny exceptions that you point out, because if you're taking care of the little things, the big things take care of themselves. My compliments.
Thank you. And with that, I think Dan has an internal audit perspective on all this that he wants to share as well.
Thanks, Joe. And, you know, Walt and I had talked about, in addition to what we would require to report on with respect to the agreed-upon procedures report and ICA's procedures over booster clubs, we thought it would be good that, at this time, just to give you an idea, in addition to all these things, the work internal audit does with intercollegiate athletics. Throughout the year, I mean, we have a, what I would call a fantastic and a very good working relationship with Sandy and Lynn and the other individuals on the line, as well as other members of ICA. And we have done a lot of things on an ongoing basis, and I just want to highlight those too. The NCAA requires, has a compliance, many requirements in their compliance book that's very thick, as anybody that's ever looked at it knows. As part of that, there's a requirement, the NCAA and the Association of College and University Auditors puts together a manual to test all of the various requirements. And I'll spare you all, there's like over 20, but just as an example, they are areas such as athletic apparel and equipment, playing and practice seasons, eligibility, recruiting, rules of education, complimentary admissions, just to name a few. On a four-year cycle, we go through and make sure we test all of those areas. And we do that, once a year we do the testing and make sure that over the four-year period, we cover all of the areas as outlined in those documents. So that keeps us present on a regular basis in athletics. Additionally, some other things we do, we do a game day audit, usually at the football stadium, where we go on an unannounced basis and do things with respect to parking sales, concession sales, admissions at the gates, just looking at those type of things. We've also expanded that over the years to include some other events, such as events held at Rec Hall or the Bryce Jordan Center, that hockey game we've tested in the past, just to make sure from an ongoing basis that those things are, you know, in a public perception arena, you know, people want to make sure that everything is going well at this, and because there's cash, there's cash being transacted. So we do that as well. We have done in the past, on an annual basis, a ticket accountability and reconciliation work, basically that looked at football tickets and reconciling that. As that process has become more and more electronic and automated, what we are now focusing on is just the reconciliation itself. So we don't have to go in every year, but we can show up when we would like to and look at that reconciliation that's being maintained in athletics. So that's something else we do. And then finally, not on a recurring basis, but athletics, just like any other department, which I mentioned earlier in the, in my discussions, is subject to audit, similar to any other academic or administrative problem, our program. And last year, we did conduct an audit of intercollegiate athletics, their financial operational and IT, and issued our report on that. So that gives you an idea of how we have our presence and what we're doing on an ongoing basis. Any questions on that?
I don't, but what I was going to say, between what you guys do and what Matt described, I think, is monitoring transactions, education, you know, and the, you know, obviously DNT comes in and looks at internal controls and the like, I think there's a hell of a lot being done here, and it feels pretty good to me. But I'll, anybody on the committee have any other questions?
Nope.
I do have one, is Lynn still on?
Yes, I am.
Lynn, one question for you. We're, you know, when you look at this whole thing, we're $5.23, $2.9 million in the black, which is awesome. Obviously, a lot of that is driven by the contributions and the like, but if you were to look at other schools throughout the country, would you say that most athletic programs are in the black or not? I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, great question, Walt, and I would say most institutions are not in the black. Most institutions operate, if you include, if you were to include the funding they receive from their institutions or the support they receive sometimes from their institutions, they would be operating in the red or breaking even.
I think it's also important to note that Penn State is probably one of, and it varies by year, but only one of 10 to 12 institutions across the country that are deemed self-supporting. Probably a known fact, everyone, everyone here, but we're not, we are, we are kind of operating on our, on our own means. No tuition dollars, no state appropriation, no student fees. And again, only about 12 schools in the country can state that. So when you see profitability, USA Today will have a database annually, and you'll see profitability, there will be more schools that are profitable, but it's often a result of subsidies that they're receiving from.
Yep, was that Rick that just said that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I wanted to kind of end on that note. I mean, from my perspective, looking at this thing, I think this is an income statement that we all, as alums and/or trustees ought to be very proud of. And I, for one, am really excited about, A, where we are, and B, all of the compliance and the controls that you guys have around this thing. I think you guys, you know, have a tremendous group of people, and you're doing a great job. And so congratulations from my perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Walt, this is Ted. I share your positive attitude and optimism, but Sandy, are you still on the call?
I'm sorry, Walt, I'm sorry, she had to step out.
Well, I was going to ask her, some of us attended a meeting with her and Coach Franklin that caused me some concern about, it's not my term, it's the escalation of expenditures, the, what's the term, everybody?
Arms race.
Arms race, thank you, exactly. In light of what you summarized, Walt, which I, as I already said, I'm agreeing with your positive perspective, but I'm concerned about what the arms race, thank you for correcting me, is going to affect that. For the rest of you, essentially what Sandy and Coach Franklin conveyed to us was a shortfall in monies. Let me ask the athletics folks on the call, did I summarize that correctly?
I, not being at the meeting, you're talking about, not clear if they, what exactly they presented as far as the shortfall. I mean, from what you can see now, financially, we're in, we're in great shape. There's no doubt, and Dan and Gary can speak to this, as can David, that all of that.
Okay, it's probably not a fair question, given, you know, who, Walt, let you and I talk about it offline, and maybe it's something that should be discussed further. Maybe not.
Sure, sure, okay, okay. But go, if you want, Lynn, if you want to just finish up what you were going to say, that's fine, too.
Yeah, thank you, Walt, I appreciate it. I just want to make a point, what Ted's trying to say there is a very good point. There's no one across the country who isn't concerned about what people have referred to as the arms race, including us. And we've had conversations, athletics, with David Gray and Dan and Gary Langsdale as it relates to the risks associated for athletics from a financial perspective. So it's one that we're very cognizant of, very sensitive to, and in part why we continue each year to present to the Board of Trustees our financial model and our financial plan. So it's a very fair question and a good point.
Great. Ryan, Elliot, you guys have any comments, questions?
Yeah, we're good, I'm good.
Great. Lynn, Matt, Rick, and please tell Sandy thank you for joining us. We'll look forward to hearing from you a year from now, and hopefully we still have a black number.
That's the plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, I understand. Take care, guys.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, thanks.
Okay, and Dan, thank you for your update on the internal audit piece of that as well.
You're welcome.
So Ted, the next piece of it is Gary Langsdale. Ted, you guys just bringing us up to speed on the risk subcommittee?
So Ted's pointing at me, Walt, so the risk, the risk subcommittee met most recently on Friday, May 18th, at one of its scheduled meetings. The primary area of discussion, we've talked about our update of progress on the peer review that had been conducted last summer, and where we are on the various recommendations that came out of that peer review. And in summary, we're making progress. More work to be accomplished, but we are making progress on schedule for what we expected to do, to make further improvements in a program that has a solid base. The other item that was covered was, we had a guest, Laura Hall, who is the Senior Director of Campus Recreation in the Division of Student Affairs, who spoke to the subcommittee about the process that was used to identify and quantify risks in the various club sport activities. It was not about the noise in the system recently, it was about the process, the objective risk identification and quantification process that was undertaken to evaluate those activities. And I think the subcommittee members who were in attendance seemed very pleased with what they heard.
I would, this is Ted, I would, and I know Walt will second this comment, we were very impressed with that process. It's very thorough, very fair, very objective. I have some concerns about the specific noise that you mentioned, and I think that that might be something that we discuss later on in the executive session. But I want to go on record, as I said, and I know Walt would agree, the process that's been put in place to evaluate some 70, help me with the number, 71, 70?
78.
78 sports and clubs and so forth, is a superb process that gets to the heart of the risk and ultimately is for the best interest of the student participants. I couldn't say stronger support than that. Thank you very much.
I was, I think I used the word blown away. I just could not believe how the detailed process that they went through, and I thought it was an excellent update, really, really good update, Gary, so I agree with Ted on that.
And I think that's worth note, and your Audit and Risk Committee reports to the full board that you include those unanimous comments, Walt.
I will, that's a good point. I'll do that in July. Gary, can you make a note to make sure that we talk about that before I give the update?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
Those were the major items of business for the subcommittee. Our next meeting will take place sometime in late summer.
Great. And Gary, you brought us up to speed on... And Gary, you, you brought us up to speed on a peer review that, that I thought we, we did an excellent job in asking some other universities to come in and look at our overall risk. I know you updated us on that, I don't know, it was a meeting or two ago, but is that something that you see periodically doing? And I don't know if it's once every three years or what the, what the timeframe is, or do you feel, do you feel like you can kinda keep in touch with your colleagues and, and make sure that our program is consistent and or better than what other people are doing?
I think both, the answer is both. But I'm not gonna commit to an every-three-year peer review, but we should, it is, it, it was a valuable process, we learned from it, and there's no doubt that doing that periodically, maybe every five year, four or five years, would be appropriate. And in the meanwhile, we do stay in touch with, with our peers to understand what, what the, what the arms race is in risk management.
Yeah, I mean, my, I guess my view in this whole thing is that, you know, what we do on the audit side from year to year doesn't, doesn't change that much. I know there are pronouncements that come out from time to time, but what is happening on the risk side is moving very rapidly and changing quickly, and I just wanna make sure that we're keeping up with it.
Yes, sir.
But Walt, let me give you a G-Wiz statistics on the dynamics of risk. I was at the Risk and Insurance Management Conference in Texas a month ago with nine-thousand-one-hundred other people. Now, that's not just universities, primarily private sector, but that puts in perspective how much interest there is that people, nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-some people went to a conference on risk and insurance management.
Yeah, that's a lot of people. I understand.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you, Gary, thank you, Ted. Last but not least, Dan, are you gonna update us on the internal audit overall?
Yeah, I have a couple items that I wanna touch on, thanks, Walt. The first is the quarterly follow-up report with respect to open issues, which I keep, you get distributed every quarter. Couple items, just two items I really wanna highlight on that. The first one is, the first item on the list, it goes back to an old outstanding item, this Everly College of Science Awarded Lab, and we expanded in the notes section what's going on. That continues to remain open because they have not, while they have made progress and identified the way to address the findings, it requires them to go from workstation by workstation to get that cleared up. And that just because it's a, it's an interdisciplinary lab, in other words, there's, there's people from different colleges involved in this lab, it's not something you just pull the plug on and it, it happens instantly. And I just wanted to let you know that, and I put in there that as of the date of this report, which was March thirty-first, they were about seventy percent of the way through. So I'm satisfied, we're, we're satisfied with the progress they continue to make and it's, it's gone ongoing. And it's not like they have not, they're not doing it, they are making the right progress. The other item that I wanted to call your attention was about six line items down is College of Engineering. They're, you know, we have an eighteen-month deadline to address all of the findings. They were passed due as of March thirty-first. However, we got together with the Dean, Dean Schwartz, and, you know, again, he was relatively new, he came in as the report was issued before his on, coming on board. We got together with him and did various communications with him, his people, as well as Nick and, and his office. They agreed that it will be done by June, but they committed to being done and having everything cleared by June thirtieth. And that was communicated with, yes, coming up and at the end of this.
So the, before the next board meeting?
Yes.
So we would ask you at the next board meeting whether we have a committee meeting scheduled or not?
You will hear about that, yes. And they, they communicated, definitely communicated that with Nick, that they would commit it to getting it done.
Okay.
Hey, Dan, what is, what is OPPCure? Don't mean to be naive, but that's on the last page?
Yeah, now, that is Office of Physical Plan, and it's their system, their electronic system they have with respect to building admittance and monitoring of the comings and goings in those buildings. So that's at OPP. Similarly, auxiliary and business services with respect to the student residence, they have their own seat, they, they had operated seat cure system as well, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. All right. Do you wanna move on?
That's all I wanted to highlight with, with respect to this report, Walt. Any questions?
Yeah, none, none here.
Then the, the last item that I have that, in the, the book for this, for the public session, has to do with our quality assurance program. I communicate this at the end of every year. We are required by industry standards, internal audit industry standards, to have a quality assurance program, and that includes ongoing surveys of our, what I call our clients slash customers, the people we audit. So we get regular feedback from them on every audit, we send out surveys. And in here, I've included the statistics for the past, it's for the past three years. The survey that itself is included in your material, but if you go to the, the second last page of the, of the presentation, it has, and we, we do two separate groups. We do executive leadership in the unit as well as the operating management who we deal with, and we have, the surveys are a little different for each one because of the focus of what we'd expect to hear back from people. But on, we use a one-to-four scale, and you can see over the, the three years is very consistent. And the response rate, you know, for these type of surveys is fairly high. If you can get over twenty percent, you're doing pretty well. We've been getting in the thirties and even in the forties a few years, so we're satisfied with that. What I'd like to do, unless there's a question about those, is just go to the very last page with respect to the quality assurance assessment. In addition to doing the internal assessment, and each year we have somebody on the staff review work papers, make sure our audit manual is updated, we are required to have a external quality assessment done once every five years. So basically, that just will play off of everything we do on an ongoing basis. This external review will then come in and validate what we are doing and look at that. So there is a, there's a typo on that bullet, said last review done was fiscal year June twenty-twelve, it was actually twenty-thirteen. So what that means?
I, I can't, I can't laugh at the irony of a typo on a chart titled quality assurance.
There, there you go.
Forgive me.
That's okay, that's fair.
Yeah.
But anyway, I just, just some humor, see if that's what it is, okay?
Look, you know how much I respect you, so that's...
But anyway, we're due, the more important, we are due for quality assurance review this coming year, June thirtieth, twenty-eighteen. And I've had a discussion with Walt on this, there's various ways you can get this done. You can do it by hiring an, a, an external firm to come in and do this, which is one way to do it. What we have done in the past, and I would propose we continue to do, similar to what Gary did with his, is we actually have internal audit directors from other higher ed institutions come in and...
So, so external?
Yes, they are external, and it, you know, in the past, we've had members from the University of Pitt, last time at University of Pittsburgh, Colorado State, I think it was Purdue and Ohio State, if I'm correct. But those are, you know, they come in and will do, it's a standard review, it's all prescribed by the industry standards, what they have to do. They will actually, I know they talk to the Audit Committee Chair, they'll talk to the President, various other people, a lot of interviews, then they'll do a detailed review of our work and that type of stuff. So talking with Walt, I would propose the same thing, and I would like to get feedback from the committee members if they're comfortable with that approach.
Let me ask a question, it must be done every five years, but says who? Says standard industries?
Internal, international, internal audit standards.
So that's not really anything that's in our bylaws or anything like, it's just, if we're gonna...
Right.
...follow industry standard, we, we're gonna do this.
That's correct.
Okay, great.
In our report, we say our, our audits were conducted in accordance with standards. For us to be able to say that, we gotta do this review.
Okay. I will give you my feedback on what you're proposing, and I will use the success that Gary Langsdale did in bringing in outside people from peer institutions for a risk assessment. I think it probably, by the way, saved us money, because I know how much we paid those people. I think your proposal, yeah, for the rest of the committee, the answer is we paid them nothing.
Covered their expenses.
Yeah, we paid them nothing. So I certainly would support your proposal, we use peer people to do the external audit.
Okay. Thank you, Ted.
I, I, I agree with Ted on this, I think, I think it makes sense. I do think that, Dan, I think there's probably some cadence, and I don't know that it's every other time, but I think every once in a while, you should think of maybe about going out externally and paying a little bit of money to do it. But I'm, I'm, in general, I love what Gary did on the risk side, and I think we can learn a lot from other peer, probably as much from peer institutions as we would bring in an external auditor in to come and look at us. So I'm, I'm totally in favor of it myself.
Thank you, Walt. We will, obviously, and I'll be proceeding with that and trying to assemble a group of volunteers to come in and spend some time.
I should, I should ask if there's anybody in the committee that would not, would prefer to see an external person that we, you know, paid a lot of money to, to come in and do it. If anybody feels differently, let, you know, raise your hand.
Walt, the only thing that I would say, this is Ryan, the only thing that I'd say, I'm, I'm absolutely not adverse to it, but I do think that on occasion, at some point in time, that should happen so that you don't end up with academic group think, where you don't get too, too, you know, where we're drinking our own bath water, is the old expression when you... So I, I don't think it needs to be done all the time, but every night, once in a while, I think you need a sanity check and get outside of the academic bureaucracy and do it as well.
That's true, two of the four committee members here have said that. I think we need to note in the minutes or records or whatever, that five years from now, we recommend an external.
Consideration of an external, right.
Yeah.
Right, I could, you know, I go through and get the votes and how much it would cost. And what I could offer possibly, even, even in this time, is maybe trying to get an internal audit director from a, for-profit entity or something outside of higher education. I could, not sure how much success I could have, but I could try and see if I could...
No, we're fine with your proposal for now.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, don't misunderstand, I'm good with it, I just think that there are, at any point in time, somebody has to come in and turn this upside down, look at it with whatever type of eyes.
And Walt, one thing I will do is I put that team together and try and assemble that. I will make sure you're comfortable with the team before we go ahead and finalize everything, okay?
Yeah, that sounds great. All right. Dan, anything else on your end?
That's it for now, thank you, Walt.
Okay. Joe, I don't think we have any other topics on the public agenda, am I correct, or am I, is there anything that's come up since we put it together?
No, that, that's correct, I think that was the last item.
All right. With that, then Shelley, I think we can move on and have WPSU disconnect the auto, audio stream.